Good morning, welcome to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, March fourteenth. You can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comments. Okay, seeing none additions to the agenda, we will have a couple additions from Road and Bridge, and then we have the countywide cleanup flyer and news release to be approved. Reading approval of minutes, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I watched the meeting and read it, so I feel comfortable believing that.
Okay, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports, Commissioner Rebus?
I don't think I have any for today.
Yeah. Ms. Rebus?
I did attend the Kansas broadband road show last Tuesday at Hiawatha. And interesting is a totally different take on some of the, you know, how the they're approaching to push broadband out to the counties and stuff. It was more of a focus spirit type of thing, so it was interesting, so I, I, it's kind of hard to, to boil it down into a nutshell, so sometime maybe I can talk further on it.
Okay. I would just like to let everyone know our Atchison County cleanup is coming up about a month from now. It'll be April twenty first, twenty second, and twenty third, and you'll be hearing more about that once we approve the, the press release and flyer. Also, just want to acknowledge constituents have stopped me pretty much everywhere I go about valuations and their taxes, and I just want to ensure that the public knows that I have all of you, it's my best interest, and we'll work hard to ask hard questions and look at our budget. We're kicking off budget workshops earlier this year, so we'll start meeting with department heads on April sixth, and just want to, to know that I understand what's a concern, and we'll do everything we can to to keep efficiencies and do more with less, so appreciate the trust that people have and stopping me to ask about that. David Mercy Air is not going to be here, but we've had this purchase order for a few weeks now from Centos, and he approved it, recommended Centos fire protection to replace failing addressable silent night control panel panel with new replacement model in the amount of four thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Yep. All right.
This will be coming later in the meeting?
Yes, yeah, he will be at twelve thirty. So we're gonna go ahead and I will look for a motion to approve that countywide cleanup flyer and press release. It was sent to us by our IT director this morning. Do I have a motion to approve the news release and cleanup flyer, please?
So move.
Okay. Then moved, do I have a second?
I'll say, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Thanks for that, Wes.
That's good.
Okay, Road and Bridge, Joe, jump in here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for.
Yep.
We have time slot for me.
Two orders of business that I added to the agenda. Well, I believe you have a nomination for county weeds.
Yes, I have a nomination for Ben Taylor to be the county weed supervisor. He has passed his basic school general exam right away, six, accused weed aid, and has been identifying and spraying weeds for two years, has been with Road and Bridge for three years. Past experience, he worked for Jackson Farmers as a weed sprayer and cattle and feeds, and he owned the construction company for ten years. These are all questions that are asked on this form. And he went to high school in Utah and went to Weber State for four years in criminal justice and electronics, and I feel like he is very well, very capable, and should be the person we nominate into this position.
Okay, I would recommend to nominate Ben Taylor for Atchison County Weed Supervisor. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, congratulations then.
You need to come up and sign, sign this sheet if you would, please.
Yep, just the right there, and I want to say thank you for being a resource for constituents. I know they stop you on the road and ask you questions, and it's nice that you have the answers for them. I appreciate that very much.
It's been given the opportunity by Joe to be educated on it, which has been very helpful, so.
Good.
Thank you, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations, and now work starts.
Yeah.
The other, other I have is a notice of award to Morton Road Mill and Overlay that needs to be signed by Chairwoman Quinn. It's the owner considered a bid submitted to you, this is to Harbor Construction. Or above described work and responsibility received February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and information for bidders. You will hereby notify that your bid has been accepted for items in the amount of one million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents. And you are required by information to bidders to execute agreement, furnish required contractors' performance bond, payment bond, and certifies of certificates of insurance within ten days the start date of this notice to you. If you fail to execute an agreement and furnish their bonds within ten days from this date, notice said owner will be entitled to consider all your rights arising by, out the owner's acceptance of your bid. And abandoned as a portrait of this bid bond, the owner will be entitled to such rights granted by law, and then it needs to be signed.
Okay, do I have a motion to grant the chair authority to sign the notice of award to Harbor Construction in the amount of one million six sixty-nine, six ninety-two, and fifty-five cents?
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, and we'll sign.
Any questions?
Nope, can you just pass on our thanks to Mr. Pepper for wanting to through the process of?
Oh, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm getting on time. Stacy?
Nice, since you all are requisitioned to be approved for a, it's for thirty-four hundred dollars, it's for a scale arm. We kind of have been talking about this for a long time at my department, sometimes it's hard to get them to stop on the scale. We had an arm there, and then when we're done with them, we can lift the arms. We didn't put it on when we first put the scale up there, and over the years, it's kind of been, man, I wish we had that arm. And now, when we moved that building over there to put up my new scale house, I'm gonna be out there in the field somewhere, so it's gonna be even more important to have that arm so I can stop those people, because they're not gonna see me, that's what they're like.
Across?
Sometimes some do, not everybody stops, and with the changes that we have coming, it's gonna be important for them to stop out there and not drive on by. So this will stop them on there until I push the button, and you know what I'm talking about, you know, yeah, so.
Okay, Stacy, our solid waste director recommends that we go with a purchase order for the vendor WH scale in the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars for a scale traffic arm with remotes, not includes labor and freight. So a motion to approve, and moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All right, I also have a purchase order for Murphy tractor in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for a four-ten P backhoe. This has actually once been approved prior with a bid opening, and we went with the cat because it was cheaper at the time, however, since then, we have found that they're unable to fulfill the order as, as we approved. So, Commissioner Rebus, do you wanna?
Yeah, so I have a motion for concerning the sales agreement with Foley Equipment Company for the two thousand twenty-three backhoe loader. The company was not able to produce a working thumb in accordance with bid specifications. Foley delivered the backhoe, but the county did not use it, because it was not suited for our purposes. After notice, Foley retook possession of the backhoe, canceling the contract. I moved the board of county commission to decline to appropriate funds to make payment on the sales agreement with Foley Equipment Company for the two thousand twenty-three backhoe loader.
I'll second that. Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Be good.
So I'll follow that with the recommendation from Solid Waste for Murphy Tractor in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the four-ten P backhoe with the thumb needed to complete the operation as always. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
All right, I mean, Solid Waste fees now, or?
Yeah, so before she leaves, the next item down was gonna be the resolution for courthouse hours, but we have the resolution for the tipping fees. Eric and I reviewed this last week, but we didn't want to take action with you absent. So did you have a chance to?
Yeah.
Okay, you reviewed it, and can you remind me the resolution number on that? Where were? Resolution twenty twenty-three for the tipping fees? That we need to approve? Yes, we didn't approve last week. Mr. Anderson?
Fifteen nineteen, I think.
I'll say that's what I was showing. Okay. Should I leave this in full?
Uh, this up to you.
Okay.
You're not required to, but.
Okay, yeah, all right, so Atchison looking for a motion to approve Atchison County, Kansas Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen nineteen. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County is responsible for the management of solid waste within the county, and the county created a solid waste management planning committee and developed a solid waste management plan as required by KSA sixty-five dash thirty-four oh five. And whereas, Atchison County has systems in place for the disposal of municipal solid waste, construction and demolition debris, household hazardous waste, yard waste, brush, tires, and recyclables, including plastics, glass, and scrap metal. And whereas, solid waste operations in Atchison County have been funded through a mixture of ad lorm taxes, countywide retailer sales tax, and user fees commonly known as tipping fees. And whereas, on October twenty-second, twenty thirteen, Atchison County adopted Resolution twenty thirteen thirteen seventy-five, which was superseded by January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen by Resolution twenty fifteen fourteen oh three, establishing tipping fees as supplemental revenue for funding the county's solid waste management plan. And whereas, the electors of Atchison County in a special question election held November eighth, twenty twenty-two, approved the adoption of a three-fourths of one percent dedicated use retailer sales tax with the proceeds of the tax to be used for the purpose of funding joint law enforcement communications and solid waste disposal in Atchison County, Kansas. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners, through the adoption of Atchison County Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen eleven, repealed the nineteen ninety-three one percent countywide retailer sales tax and replaced it with the aforementioned three-fourths of one percent dedicated use retailer sales tax effective April first of twenty twenty-three and expiring on the date ten years after it is first levied, unless repealed earlier. And whereas, the supplemental revenue from the tipping fees set forth in Resolution twenty fifteen dash fourteen oh three are no longer necessary. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Atchison County Resolution twenty fifteen dash fourteen oh three is repealed effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved that Atchison County does adopt a tipping fee of forty-five dollars per ton, which equates to two thousand pounds, for construction and demolition debris. Be it further resolved that construction and demolition debris that is a product of any municipally municipally sanctioned demolition as determined by the governing body have jurisdiction, therefore, thereof, sorry, will not be assessed a tipping fee. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective upon publication in the official county newspaper. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Then moved by Commissioner Rebus, do I have a second?
Second.
Then seconded by Commissioner Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's been adopted this day, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas. Yep. There you go. Now I can start putting out some Florida. Hey. So, yeah. Again, here.
Check that box.
Yeah, okay. It's a two little thing. Um. Okay, and then resolution for courthouse hours, I don't have a copy of that in my folder, but it's on the agenda.
I'll make it printed.
Okay, thank you.
Were, did you want to make any changes? How many do you want me to print?
Go on, you don't need them. Okay.
It's gonna be on driver, so. Once, huh? Is there a picture drive?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted anything about. Well. Trusting, I don't know, I'm afraid of the elected officials that set their own operating hours and accordance with.
Office hours are one thing, the shift work as far as work, they have to deal, so. We're talking about office hours.
Right, but we're, yes, but this doesn't establish, it gives them the discretion to set their own office hours.
So the number of this would be twenty twenty-three fifteen twenty? Yes.
Would be.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve Atchison County, Kansas Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen twenty, whereas KSA nineteen dash twenty-six oh one authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to fix the days and hours during which county offices shall remain open for the conduct of business, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, as follows. The Atchison County Courthouse shall be open to the public Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. Department heads shall have the discretion to set their own office hours, subject to approval by the commission. The courthouse shall be closed on all such holidays as set by the Board of County Commissioners. During any time that the local disaster emergency has been declared, county offices may be closed to the public upon approval of the Board of County Commissioners. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon adoption. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
It's been approved by Commissioner Noel, do I have a second?
Same.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Rebus, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero and is adopted on this fourteenth day of March twenty twenty-three by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas. Did we have any other memorial hall letters of interest?
My partner, Perry McKinnon, and he indicated that he was going to send a letter of interest. Yeah, he's currently a trustee. So I don't know if that's been received yet, so.
Okay.
But I did talk to him this week.
So we'll hold off on that one.
And we do have now.
Um, we have two, and with one opening, and the gentleman didn't qualify based on active duty, yeah, and so there's another letter someone is supposed to be sending as well that had interest, so we'll just wait for next weekend, I'll look at Michelle and see if she's gotten any of that works for you guys.
Yeah, okay, now what if that, you know, there's gonna be a dwindling amount of pool to draw from as there's fewer and fewer veterans, you know, active duty veterans. Is at some point, will that need to be looked at or changed that we have to remove that active duty part?
Well, it's, it's not our requirement, it's the, it's a statutory requirement.
Okay.
You know, we've kind of had a war going on for a number of years here, so I think there are, there is a the pool's been enlarged in the last decade or more, but that would require a statute change, because it requires at least two trustees saw surface during a time of war.
Can we send a letter or a notification to, that could be up to you, and?
Legion?
Thank you. I mean, that could be kind of like going heteroniously a little bit, yeah. It's like, let your guys know, and gals.
Got that note, Kevin. We'll pass it on. Thank you, okay, legislative updates, Commissioner Noel?
Okay, well, I know that we haven't really discussed among our commission very much about, you know, things that's going on in the legislature, and being on the area agency on aging, they do have a bill. Well, it's actually been put forth, this House Bill twenty-four sixteen and Senate Bill one oh one that basically does the same thing, is providing the sales tax exemption for age, area agencies on aging. And I'm just want to update why this is important to area agency on aging is a lot of the larger agencies are part of the county, and so they're automatically get sales tax exemptions, but when we have a standalone agency like we are part of, they have never been qualified for that, and they're, you know, it's, they're getting government grants and government money, but then they're still paying sales tax. We were in the process of trying to build a building at Hiawatha for the area agency for the headquarters, and it would go a long ways to help. You know, that you're paying all the sales tax for all, on all of these things, plus it kind of leveled the playing field across the state for the standalone agencies versus the county that's incorporated with the area agencies, and I just wanted to bring you that, if you have a chance to visit with any of our representatives or anything, it's just something that would mean a lot to our agency, and I also didn't know if there was anything that I ought to know about that's going on, you know, as far as interest from your different departments, or if there's been anything put forward, you know, to when, when we're speaking with representative, you know, it's like, put, put in a good word here or there. Right. And I know you had mentioned, you had asked me what bills this, or?
Yeah, I got them down here.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And hopefully this year, it'll, it'll, it's actually been carried in both houses, so this stands a better chance this year. It's always been one of those things, it's kind of like, yeah, it sounds good, but it gets dropped in the thick of all of the other legislative agendas, and so I just wanted to speak briefly on that.
Probably bundle a bunch of sales tax bills and have one conference committee, one bill, and probably, this is what happens, I mean, usually right at the end of the sessions when this stuff gets dealt with, or it doesn't.
Have you heard much about the bill, it was kind of just pile balloons put up that they were talking about, the legislator would, legislature would basically appropriate money to the counties to try to offset property tax? So I guess it would be taking income tax left over, and they would, you know, and I, I, I just wondered how that would affect us. I mean, that's just something that's floated out there that could really affect how our budget is created, and it would be subsidized. My, I think that's the one that's in the Senate, Tom Afterson's behind that, I think that was to help offset they're trying to eliminate local sales tax on food. Is what I think, I think that's the one that's to try to make up for that. Now, the way I, they were talking about, because this came about with the appraisal being so high, and they were talking about exempting door like anything under sixty-five thousand valuation, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and this was gonna be to offset property tax, and it would be, I guess, a state. They would, it would be appropriated by population, and they would come up with a figure to try to offset anything that was exempted, so it's just something that's interesting, it's probably far from being passed, but, you know, budget's right around the corner, and it could really change, you know, it would be a lot of.
Bill number.
I don't, I, I, I was, I was just got my information off the news, and I didn't have anything, but it's just something to watch. And I thought it was worth, some of these things that come around pretty fast, it's just interesting to discuss and have our ear to the ground to know that what's happening.
Do you have any others on that?
No, up to date for that.
Okay.
Maybe the magic's having a bill number, you don't have a bill number, stuff to find things on there. And, and I'm sorry, that was just, I think, another thing that I had heard of that was, it really intrigued me, and it was just about a week ago, and I haven't had time to dig into what that.
Well, that they change the bill number sometimes, and they give a different number at the other house, so.
Yeah.
It's never easy.
Um, okay, next is the one fifty-four capital outlay account balance, and I added a couple bullet points of just like budget discussion, anything that we want to pass along to our department heads as they're preparing for the workshops starting April sixth, and then also the COLA discussion, because typically HR, as well as our departments, are looking for guidance on that when they're plugging their numbers in, so they don't have to do it again, so just kind of curious where you guys are at on that.
What's the COLA right now, do we know?
Um, I would be interested to know how you would determine that, because we've had that discussion in the past few years. Not even utilized our listserv, and the counties are coming back that they struggle with it every year, and several of them haven't done a COLA, but they've adjusted like per position based on non-elected employees, like where they should be, but then also others have done a COLA, but not really the same way of determining it, so we leaned on.
It's said by the government, I mean, as far as, there's different ones, but the one they're using right now is terrible for us, eight point seven.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Except it was quite a year, yeah. Did you look it up to there, Wes? Yeah.
So is that on the C I P index, I think that was what Bowers said last year.
I'll say, Jody also said IRS COLA for twenty twenty-three was estimated eight point seven.
Yeah. Wow.
Thanks, Jody.
There reflects what's happened the last year, I mean. Not sure exactly which agencies, IRS, and she said.
She said, yeah, IRS.
Yeah, but there's.
There's another one.
Security comes out with it.
I don't know exactly which office calculates it, but. That's what they're all using.
Bureau of Labor's labor statistics, I think.
Might be consumer price index.
That's the one that Mr. Bowers said last year.
Yeah.
They have. I was gonna say dozens, but it might be a different chart.
Susan, there's lots of different.
Well, and I feel like that happened last year is like we had that number and then we talked to the city and we talked to several other people of like. To try to come up with.
Yeah, it changed twice during the year last year, like monetary reimbursement and COLIS, they did to change that thing because it was. Rapidly changing.
They are. It's been growing concerning when. People. On how they're surviving and what they're making. So. I don't know. You know, you guys are trying to figure out what you're going to set up, but at the same time. The center you find out then, because we. We were I am thinking about possibly giving some exits of some sort if I can get it figured into the budget.
Yeah.
Because we can't retain our employees for.
And when I'm with all the different departments after my election. There's pretty good range. I was surprised at the wide range of what people are paid with the county or within the organization. With similar skill sets. I mean, there's obviously different skill sets. That there are, we talked about getting some kind of a. Uh, wage schedule or something step schedule that's somewhat consistent and. But there's definitely some people who are underwater, I think, on the home salaries, the wages. Yeah. Some may be about right. I don't know what to talk that through.
I think that would be interesting to do is. Like, because you can forecast what a percentage would be overall. HR can give us that versus individualizing where. You know, kind of like these other counties have done to get people. More on a scale. So I just wanted to bring that up, so we'll. Dive in deeper on that with. With HR and. Kind of begin thinking about that, but. Um, did you guys have a chance to look at the spreadsheets that we received? That were updated after period thirteen? Um, I heard from the appraiser, um, she's out sick. And her line item will be used for aerial imagery imagery and the floor covering for her office. Alterations.
I didn't get a chance to look at it until it was here this morning.
Okay.
Which bridge and program I've seen it. Who sent that to us?
Uh, Mark.
Marcus. Oh, I didn't see that. I'm sorry. Yes, Monday at eight thirty three, you know. Yeah, I did see that. I started looking at it and I did get distracted, so I did not study it.
Okay. You want to wait and cover it next week?
Yeah, I haven't had really a chance to digest any of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, is there more information to add to this?
Yeah, so last year when we have these, like, we just went down and talked to each department head. As far as the what the plan was for it. Prior to rolling over. So we will just wait and. I can send this updated spreadsheet out because we hadn't had. Twenty twenty two, period thirteen. Added in there, so this should be accurate based on the end of the year.
So what is period thirteen?
It's the thirteenth month for accounting purposes.
Oh, okay. So these are current balances on as Mr. understands, but she. We also have a projection of what they have left to spend on projects.
So this is the rollover. This is what's left, not what's in twenty twenty three.
Do we have any idea what's left to? But plan to be done, but have rough costs, that's going to be. That'd be helpful to know. As long as it's within this, it's okay, but.
Have you had a chance to look at any of the budgets? You know, this will be the first time sitting with us to see.
Yes, but not to study them in depth, but I have been I've been looking through that, yeah.
Okay.
I'll perhaps several questions.
One of the things, um, there's several overlaps like in different departments. And I don't want to talk to department heads without you, your. Approval, but in order to kind of understand costs. Um, I think separating some of them out. Um, will be helpful in being able to retain what we're spending and have a better understanding. Of that.
Example of over that.
Um, well, so. I'm going to say. Util, I'm going to use utilities as an example, so if three departments, I'm going to use the E O C. So having utilities run under EMS instead of split out amongst three departments, so it's easier to retain what they are and not just one line item, but. Like having I T separated out from G I S. So other counties have G I S. Coupled with like appraiser, so we can see like what I T costs are. Just for that, because it's hard when you go down through and you have interlapse of departments and.
Yeah.
To understand what the true costs are.
Cost allocation within that.
Yes.
Where's the estimate, you know, that'd be perfect.
Right, but it's just easier that like. When we're reading and we're signing the bills and going through them to understand what true costs are. Um, and then we can ask. Better questions when we're sitting with them, but to give them guidance instead of just let. Everybody show up at the time and. How are their homework done? Like.
I agree.
I want. I want to be able to work and give a heads up, but I don't want to do anything and then. Be the only one. You guys are like, what the heck are you doing?
Yeah, I'm fine with that if you want. Broke that, that's fine.
And it's just taken time like to get into groove of it seems like each year I can. Dig a little bit deeper, understand a little bit better and. Um, especially. This year when. Constituents are putting the pressure because we want to make sure that we're. We're doing a good job when asking all the questions and. Looking at doing our homework so that when they ask if we've done our job, we can say yes.
You're referring to the constituents complaining about their appraisals.
Well, just. In general, so we're in charge of the budget and doing a thorough job and asking the questions like. It's not always easy, but at least we can. Make sure that everything's accounted for and we're. Making good decisions, I guess. So other than the appraiser, HR is here. She doesn't have a carryover. I T. G I S. Is that I T or G I S carryover?
Um, it's probably I T carryover because G I S doesn't.
Because.
Have much expense.
Okay, and G I S that is the aerial imagery is for G I S, right? Do they appraise it?
For the appraiser.
So Roger was in here when they were talking about it, so.
G I S uses that for the great with office. The G I S works for every department, not just a break of office. That's why it's not in the appraisers office anymore, because. When it was, other offices weren't able to access G I S. That's why it's split out. From the appraisers office and put under I T. Back in fourteen fifteen, so I mean. Um, so. The aerial images are purchased by the appraisers office. Given to the G I S department to put them all into the system for the appraisers office to.
So G I S being with the appraiser, other offices couldn't use it?
Sure.
Why is that?
Because that department wouldn't share. At that time, not the one we have now.
Interesting. So that was a commission problem. They didn't.
Exactly.
I was like, I mean, that's.
The G I S is used by. Or Roden Bridge.
No, yeah, no, absolutely.
Every department. So that's why I was deciding to move them under I T, which also works for every department.
I'm just for cost comparisons and different things. I think having it split out and maybe. That's easy to do, maybe not, but.
I can bring you some.
One question I've got about capital outlay, the source of the funds. Are all these funds? Uh, ever on tax monies have been carried over or some of these funds, other? Uh, sources of fees and things that may have come into their department. Like from the state or from other sources. Is it a mix? Okay.
No one.
And like rescue the sheriff, there was seventy nine. Thousands or somebody. Sitting there for.
So we backed off this twenty twenty three cap outlay and I thought that's what we did with yours. I have to look back at my notes. Because we had the role.
He wrote out for R and R.
To hit the R and R and so.
Our money to offset, but really doesn't have anything to do with the twenty twenty two. Roll over.
Just be helpful, a little bit of the background of.
Yeah, no, and I have.
War with their, they may have been.
We made notes and every department signed off, so I have those.
Okay.
So do you want department heads to send us an email or show up next week to go through these or?
Just just go over where they come in, so I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No great more work, just they probably won't top their heads, exactly what it is, more informational.
So when they come in for their.
Yeah.
Budgeting, yeah, perfect.
We got that money, but it's cool. All I gotta know.
Okay. One. Bit early, we have. Everyone here. I think we will do a. Twenty minute. Um, executive session, please. For non-elected personnel. And the folks. Uh, Roden Bridge Superintendent, H R. County Counselor and Commission, please.
Okay. I'll move that now, hello?
It's.
Twenty minutes.
This is the one that. You want to cherry?
No.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session at. Ten. Forty. Three. P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the Board of County Board come out of the executive session. At. Eleven. Oh, five. P M in the commission room, first floor courthouse, and those present will be. Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge, Jody Moore, H R, County Counselor, Pat Henderson, and three commissions.
I'll say it.
Hey, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are going into executive session. Rather than another non-elected personnel, um, twenty minutes, commission and H R.
Twenty minutes.
Yes, sir.
Stay on our left.
Yes, please.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session at. Sorry, this is there.
Seven.
Eleven oh seven P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of the executive session at. Twenty seven, eleven twenty seven P M in the commission room, first floor courthouse, and those present will be the three commissioners, uh, H R.
That's it.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'll say that.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three just. Okay, thirty minutes. Look at us. We are doing good on time. Okay. We have another executive session, please. For one hour. Uh, County Attorney, Sheriff and Commission, please. Okay, all right, and H R. All right.
We need a full hour?
I doubt.
We always extend if we say it however stuck.
Okay, then do a half hour.
Half hour, forty minutes.
Whatever you want to do. I can fill up as much time as you can.
Sing and dance. What? Forty minutes, forty minute. And this is. Attorney, client. Personnel matters.
Non-elected personnel.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess and do executive session at. Eleven thirty. Uh, A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee.
Everybody, county counselor and H R.
And that the board come out of the executive session at. Seventeen. Twelve ten P M. In the commission room. Uh, basement of the courthouse and those will present will be the three commissioners. Sheriff. H R. County Attorney. And County Councilman.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll say that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes zero. And, okay.
Hello.
This is having the books in the building.
Okay, I'll just move to extend the previous personal matter for ten minutes. Is that sufficient?
Uh, ending at. At twelve twenty.
Okay, I'll second. They moved a second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go back in the executive session, ten minutes. About an hour. Uh, well, I have. An executive session, Jody, for half hour. Um. And then at one, uh, Mr. Stevenson with Abby will be.
Maybe one thirty. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Um, so we have ten minutes. Before we go into another one. In the same.
Okay. Email appears what? It's ready right out. I don't know if you want this to be in. So we're just discussing. Yeah, it's going to be executive staring. They're just getting restroom breaks, okay? Used to. It's not wired, so. It's not, okay. Any bad, no remote control, any bad answers. I get shot. Right doors or, okay. Uh, you on that? That M D S. Uh huh. Consultant, if we could. I was gonna shoot you an email on that, but.
Yeah. Uh, I don't really understand the whole. My understanding was that M D S is is a very important thing and the person has to lay eyes on every.
Well.
Person.
Right, the consultant doesn't, but the M D S with the person in the in the facility does.
So we we would have somebody, we. So we've, we would have somebody, we were going to have our own M D S.
We already do.
And then this is just, okay.
Yeah, this is somebody that really knows how it works and. It really, and I can explain it so everybody understands if if one do that, so. Um, and she would have some time at the beginning, but it would, it would drop off when she gets her real training. Uh, because I, because I can tell we're missing, we're missing. Care and stuff that's taking place and not getting it recorded, it's not getting recorded correctly. Where, where it would, what, what it, what's called a C M I. Uh, the case mix index. It would increase that case mix index, which increases the reimbursement for.
And it also documents the level of care we're actually giving.
Correct.
We're giving the care, which is not, we, it's not even.
Non-elected.
Right.
Personnel.
And there's a lot of, yeah, a lot of things that.
Mr. Mercer, from senior village, H R, County Counselor and Commissioner.
So staff, you know, and and even other departments, um, not only nursing, but therapy and that, things that we can be doing, then I think. She can really help and educate, not only in the, but the other staff.
Uh, yes.
Apartments and that, we can really. Get some things and do some things, um. So it would, it would definitely. Pay for itself and more.
Yeah, so do, do they have a proposed agreement or?
No, no, uh, yeah, we can do something similar to. Mine or wording and that, it's just really. With the kind of straightforward. Like I said, at first it would probably be a little more time, but then it would travel up to maybe one visit a month or something. Four hours a month. Like that.
You brought hand up.
The system.
Okay.
Everybody.
If you wanna talk about. That before we go into executive session, if you have. Something, if you wanna cover what you brought for us. And then we'll pop into executive session for the non-elected personnel uh. After that.
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, you brought this, yeah, if you wanna explain what your.
And I didn't know what all I. Just a couple other topics, just in case you wanna talk more than this, I wasn't sure what all you wanted me to talk about, because this was one of them.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's just do an executive session first.
Okay, okay. I will move the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session. At twelve twenty four, twelve twenty five P M to discuss. Uh. Personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one, that the purposes of the closed session. Is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of the executive session at. Twelve fifty five. P M in the commission room basement of the courthouse and those present will be the three commissioners, Mr. Mercer. Uh, Pat Henderson and H R.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. We are heading into executive session. Yeah, oh, yeah, what, ten?
Okay, all motion that we go extend our executive session for ten more minutes. Same people. So it'll be uh, one ten, no, one oh five, moving on.
I'll say it.
Then moved a second and all those in favor say aye.
Yeah, hold on. Be golden cows in the budget process, um, is there anything written in stone that that would be quite an impact to a. Local vendor. Well, I think that that at least as an option, we, when that budget's presented there, then we could. Vote on it then, but. If that's, that's an option of saving that much, I think.
I'll leave it alone in budget for now, but if it comes out really bad, I'll deal with somebody or whatever, and that would be.
Convention on that, on anything like that, and then that would be something, we see it and we go through it. Time that we could consider to adjust, you know.
Well, and we always want to support local, but when you talk to that big of a difference, we have to do a threat.
Exactly, that's how I feel, there, yeah, there's a couple other ones that are, it's not that bad, but that, that's, when you're talking that. That much of a margin, that I just wanna know.
Yeah.
You know what? Uh, and and seeing, you know, I haven't gone through everything yet, but just see what what I'm seeing in the, in the budget.
I would say, anything like that, I would like to see a notation of maybe what the possible savings would be, and then we can decide down the.
There, um, is there anything else you need?
Okay, so.
No, the M D S.
You, oh, yeah, the, um, I, I did, uh. Send a email to um, Casey and. At there about an M D S consultant, the M D S is how we, how we record the care that we're getting. In, in an impacts, the, the, what the C M I, which is the case mix index, and that's kind of how we get paid. The, the uh. And right now, we're missing some reimbursement, I think we're missing some, some clinical stuff, that's, that's not getting recording, recorded. Um, I think this consultant would, could work with therapy and and nursing, uh, along with our M D S coordinator. To increase our case mix index and that, which would, like I say, which would increase our, our reimbursement and that, um. So, and this is an individual that I work with, I know very well, she's available. Um, that she would have more hours at the beginning, but then would, would, would kind of fade off and I just come up once a month. As, as most consultants would be for maybe four hours a day or something like that. Uh, but to get everybody educated and kind of get the things, um, get everybody to understand what it is that they need to document and how to document that we're capturing everything. Um, that's, that's happening with a, with a resident and or doing some things differently that, uh, that benefit the resident and also impacts I. Um, so I, I, that's, um, something to, to have a, a. A consulting contract, I guess, what.
Same thing at the, uh, clinic that I work at, and. It's amazing. Few clicks here and there and.
I know, huge, I know, and a lot of times of the staff doesn't know exactly. You know, you know, what do I need to click is. Right, and, and by the definition, um, if you read the definitions of the, of the different areas and that, that. Something can happen once or twice and everything that the staff really doesn't even think about, but that is something that can be recorded. And they need to understand that, if they, if Mrs. Jones was doing this one day, but now she's doing something different this day and we do, we do something for. While the staff doesn't really think about that little bit of a change or whatever, but that's something that needs, that, that is legitimately needs to be recorded, so they, then. You taught that that needs to be, that needs to be, uh, put into the system. So, and then, and that does impact, um, like I said, that impacts every person, so that education, I will definitely pay for itself and. Consult coming, help us with that. And the, your chef is too. All right, very good.
Thank you.
You guys have a good rest of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're running a little behind.
Oh, you're good.
Brian said that you were gonna talk. Just give him a call. I think you have his number. And write it down. Mr. Stevenson, if you wanna come up to the shade.
So, so I did create some printouts of what I had, uh, emailed everybody.
You've got these printout.
You're welcome. So the first two are just information about the, uh. Sprint grants, uh, through the state of Kansas. So we're made aware of this, um. Mid February and then the deadline was moved from the end of February to. Um, today, uh, so, uh, we had the opportunity to meet with Alan on Friday and talk a little bit about it. Um, so the long story short is, if you go to. The third, uh, piece of the packet. Um, you know, the first page just has an outline. Of the land that's owned by the Abbey and specifically the area we're looking at is along. Uh, River Road between River Road and the Missouri and then River Road and Independence Creek. That's a little easier to see on page two and three, which is just a, a drawing from the landscape architects of a potential use. When, uh, so two, page two and three are pretty much identical, uh, three is just a little more zoomed in. And what it shows is just a concept of creating a park. Uh, so for those of you who are familiar with that area, over the years, it's been used. Uh, for everything from four-wheeling to, uh, people go down and. Uh, either hunt or create their own shooting ranges and such, I think most people don't have any idea that it's owned by the Abbey. So part of the thought process was if we were able to. Create a park in partnership. Um, ideally with, uh, the state and then possibly even an agreement with, uh, the Corps of Engineers who owns the property right across Independence Creek. That we'd be able to create something that would be beneficial to the community and then also somewhat self-policing, so you get rid of some of the activities down there that. Are undesirable, just because it becomes more of a public area, uh, as a process. Uh, the walkway along River Road. Uh, at this point ends basically right where the Abbey's property begins. And there'll be conversations with, uh, the city and the county. Or my understanding is about ten years or so about continuing that, uh, down River Road. Uh, my understanding is these funds would be able to be used for that as well as any other development there. Um, part of the requirements or a part of the, when you read through the, the grant. Uh, part of the thought process is, uh, the state of Kansas trying to use up their COVID money, basically. And a part of it is to try to bring tourism into the state. So, um. With that, you know, part of the thought process would be, you'd wanna try to create some unique things with the park. I don't know that the park along the river has a lot of uniqueness in the park itself necessarily, and there are things we can do. But part of the discussion was the idea of possibly making Independence Creek slightly wider, allowing, uh, kayaking and canoeing along there, and you could even do that as rentals. Also across from the, um. The mouth of Independence Creek, there work as in Missouri. If you come back across River Road, you'll see dotted lines. On page three there and a, a red, kind of large red dot. That's an old limestone mine that the Abbey. Uh, has from where they allowed that to be mined, uh, back in the sixties. So about fourteen acres, a third or so of that. Uh, has water in it, so it's kind of like an underground lake. And so part of the discussion when we're meeting with the landscape architects was the idea that there are multiple recreational things you could do. Uh, with that, uh, everything from stocking the, the lake, so that you would have, uh, cave fishing that you could. Uh, charge for, um, cave camping. Uh, there's one sinkhole on the top of it that you could knock out and have repelling those types of things. Um, so right now, it's all conceptual. In speaking with the Department of Commerce as well as reading through the grant, uh, application. Uh, you can't apply for the grant with, uh, concepts, so you don't have to have in essence kind of all your ducks in a row. To apply, uh, like any grant. We can apply and there's, uh, an equally good chance that you don't get anything and you'll get something, right? Um. The parameters of the grant, if you go back to. Um, the second packet, which are just, uh, copies of the PowerPoint slides from the state's presentation. Uh, applicants, the minimum to apply for is five hundred thousand dollars, the maximum is ten million dollars. And then if you apply for the maximum, the state then, uh, determines how much they believe your project needs or how much they have to give. And they'll adjust it accordingly. Um. And then it just has additional parameters. Some of the things to highlight is, um, if we were to move forward in partnership, I. Uh, we plan to write the grant this evening to get it in by the deadline, and then we would find out from the state if there was any type of an award. By April third, at which point we could choose to accept or, um, or choose to reject the award. Uh, one of the other things that I found is, I went through the free calling us questions, this is the second to last page. Of, uh, of the PowerPoint package. Uh, is it does ask, uh, you know, if my city or county is avail, able to receive funds. Um. And it says that, uh, the only cities that are ineligible are cities that have received. State fiscal recovery funds, so I didn't know if Atchison County had received those or not, if we have. Uh, then it looks like we'd be ineligible to apply, uh, if we have not, then we'd be eligible.
Is that? COVID money? Local fiscal recovery funds, is that?
I don't believe we received the base screen.
I haven't either, but yet, you, sometimes they just change them slightly, I mean, sure, cause that's, it was the recovery. From.
There were two different sprint packets that, there's one that's sixteen pages and one is twenty. But the sixteen, for the twenty one on page five. Question, my city, county received ARPA funds, am I eligible to apply? Answer, cities and counties received local fiscal recovery funds from ARPA. Only cities, counties and entities that receive state fiscal recovery funds such as the base grant of higher ed funds are ineligible for sprints. I don't understand that, but.
Isn't the base current, wasn't that the, the came through, um, rainbow?
Yes. But we didn't do it.
We didn't get it.
We didn't commit to them.
Yeah.
They submit.
Yeah, but not, yeah, not as a partner.
But it, it says local fiscal recovery funds from ARPA.
Yeah, the way I read it, it sounds like if you receive the local. You're still eligible, if you receive the state, you're not eligible, but honestly, I don't know enough about those grants to speak. And tell Jamie about it.
Why is it different, it's out of the state, I'm, I'm just like, adjusted, you know? What is the county's obligations? And, I mean, and what? How do we help and, and what does it take from us?
Sure. So, uh, in reading through it, um. A nonprofit organization is not eligible to apply. So the, the county would have to be the official applicant. Um, and then it would be in partnership with the Abbey because it's the, uh, Abbey property. Uh, and then from an obligation standpoint, if, uh. The state actually awarded, uh, a grant of whatever size. Uh, the county would then be responsible for, um. Basically housing the funds and then reporting on them, which again, I'm more than happy, um. To help with the reporting and whatnot, if you look at. For the back, there's this, um, slide that has the. The arrow on it. So, um. If you receive the grant, um, we find out in April and then. In June, uh, fifty percent of the award is distributed, and then you start having just quarterly reports, so you just report on what activity is. Happening and what's been spent. And then, uh, by April of twenty twenty five, so in two years, uh, you have to spend all of it. And then, uh, fill out a report. A final report saying what. What you did with it and where the money was spent.
So no matching funds are required, that's a benefit, do you know what your amount is that you were going to shoot for in your application?
So, um. My thought process for. Good or bad, um, because of the way that. Uh, the state stipulates it, I was going to, to go high. the state stipulates it, I was going to go high with the idea then that they can, you know, make it smaller. So we applied for, they have it in a boat. It's tied to all of this as well. That was due at the end of February for senior housing and we applied for that and we went with the maximum. So I can't imagine this project would need ten million dollars, right? But my thought process, because we really don't have a lot of numbers at this point, was to apply for ten. And then if the state came back with even the minimum of five hundred thousand, that would be a win to move things forward. It was kind of my thought process.
Pat, just to clarify the commitment, if we are just the applicant in partnership with the Abbey and there's no matching funds required and we were to get two million, does that go against any of our threshold of bond?
Bond? It would require the single audit. That would be triggered for sure. No, it wouldn't have any impact on our bonded issue bonds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just it's great.
Yep.
And you guys probably pick up the audit cost.
Yeah, most likely.
Sure.
I think we're, it's likely we're going to have it anyway now.
So that's what, so I know you couldn't do it with the city because it's outside the state limits. But where P Street is here. So it's really city limits this direction, isn't it? Or is it say that it's actually down here because the mine?
I believe, I believe it's where P Street, P Street. I think they annex all the way down to the river.
Okay.
You need to confirm that. But where P Street, P Street used to go all the way down the river and probably about fifteen years ago, the county commission allowed, vacated that because it was becoming a dump. And so it doesn't go down to the River Road anymore. We were, we were annexed up to P Street by the city, probably seventy years ago.
Yeah.
When they went through, well, when Riverbend opened up.
I was involved with that, yeah. It won't affect your grant of the little pieces of the city, but most of it's in accounting, so to speak.
Yeah, because I believe the city and county both qualify for the funds.
Right. So it really won't be a problem. Okay. Just to make sure. Okay. So we're just attaches to River Road. There. Is that already improved to the to Abbey's land?
Up to the line or pretty close. I know that the sidewalk goes
Past the fertilizer.
Past the fertilizer right there.
That's the fertilizer plant, the little white dots.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, it's. And that's the yeah. So then that changes, then that is that county's road then? Is this all county road through here?
No, great.
Right here's P Street, so then draw a line like right there. So it's city to their county to their. Okay, yeah.
Put her on, I think that's right.
Well, but what are the plans?
That's what.
Do the plans?
Should I say went to the middle of the river for part of it and then to the river bank on the very north part? Which is odd, but.
Well, I think it's Corps of Engineers has some of the land up there. So it's kind of a.
Yeah, it's going to the middle of the river here and then.
Right. County road, does that expectations change? Road use? Or we've got a lot of ag, we've got rock trucks that come through there. We've got.
Oh, there's parking lots up there. If we want to park and go hiking or something. So.
Right. But if this is improved for boating, fishing and that, and we still have, because we already have a lot of complaints on, you know, from the city that we've got rock trucks coming from the north and we've got semis coming from the north that are using this road and we even more make it more park-like. How's that gonna? Ag trucks and those things, how is that going to fit into this plan?
The, the problem is the complaints that I always heard was because walkers and bikers and runners and all that. Well, I didn't plan this to take them off the road. Those get the pedestrian traffic off the road because there's going to be a trail over here on the, on the new, new park. So those walkers, it's going to actually help all those guys with the egg trucks and all because it's going to get people out of the way. Okay, you're starting to get one once in a while. I'm sure it feels like they gotta go around.
I don't think it'll hurt the commerce of the worry and it doesn't show any like narrowing of the street or anything. It's just landscape and creating a.
And the city's still getting money to try to improve that road. So that's still up in the air.
But even on the fact that it's a county road and maybe it wants to be beautified or I know, I'm just trying to, you know, look at scenarios. It's like that could affect what we do with the road or what we're asked to do with the road. It really has nothing to do with the park part of it because it's a county road that'll be through that park. So that's what I'm trying to get the relationship of what will be expected if there's an upgrade to the surrounding facility.
Sure. I do know, I don't think I've printed a particular one. Pat, if you're in the actual PowerPoint, I think it's a sixteen pager, not the one that's mainly Q and A, but the one that walks through requirements and whatnot. Page, I want to say it's like maybe ten or eleven is a page of just a bunch of pictures. It's like, I think six pictures and it shows things that it can be used for. So one of the things that the uses of the grant is for infrastructure upgrade. So as a part of if we went down this, the road of this park, any kind of upgrade or if there, if we wanted to do, if the county wanted to do something with the road, that could be part of the grant. Because the grant is able to be used for that. I'm not suggesting that you want to do that, but I'm just saying that if you did, that could be a part of what the money is used for.
So in summary, you need the county to partner because a five oh one C three is ineligible for this. So it funnels under our umbrella. You write the grant, you do the reporting, work with us. We're anticipating a single audit anyway. There's no matching funds and it doesn't hold anything against our bonding limit. I'm not seeing why we wouldn't want to partner and go for this.
I don't really see one either. And if something comes up later, you're you're still, and you're still in the timeframe where you could negotiate some changes if those came out. If there's something we haven't seen. So.
I mean, I know the timeline's quick, but also opportunities are few and far between and you being willing, willing to to write this and the opportunity that could come to the county. I mean, to beautify an area. I I think we've checked all the things of caution off the list to make sure we're not, and you know.
I'm excited. The only thing I'm uncomfortable with is the possibility of okay, we've upgraded all the surrounding and now we want you to the county since it's your road to upgrade this road to a different standard that could be very costly. You know, if we go you know, asphalt road or if it's curbed, things like that, that would be extremely costly. So I don't know what the expectations on what that road is. I mean, there's no details, you know. Is the envisioners thinking it's going to be a curbed sidewalk road by? If it's count, you know, what?
Yeah. I think with a walking trail in the park, I think you're pretty safe. And that part of the road is in pretty good shape and it's dished well and all. It's the city part that got all the damage. And so it's probably more of a city issue on their piece. It's going to be, yeah, I would guess.
Well, and I think it goes back to another discussion and that's our road and bridge department and the road plans. And it's not part of the plan, but you know, we cross that down the line and if we feel like improvements should be made or need to be made, but.
I get the impression I just keep it as natural as possible too. So we're not really wanting to add more concrete asphalt as far as it looks like to me. Yeah, the city approached us when they put the, when they got the grants for the trail up to the, the fertilizer plant. They approached us about extending it all the way up to Independence Creek Bridge and we were open to it. They did ultimately did not get that grant to be able to partner with the county on that. So I would express that we're still open to providing for the county and city as we can with this land. Right now it's sitting dormant. And our, our desire is to partner and help, help the city and the county. The people of Atchison, Atchison County.
This is ours.
Yeah. Sounds pretty safe to me at this point. We still have the right to say no later, I guess, so.
Two, I have a motion to partner with St. Benedict's Abbey on an application for the Sprint Grant.
So.
It's been moved by the second. I would second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. I'm just waiting if you need more discussion or.
I, I really don't. It's, it's hard for me to say because like I say, I don't know what the envision with so few details. I think I'm going to say a no today.
And all those opposed? Okay, passes to one. Do you need a letter of support or anything from us or you're writing on behalf of us? So probably not, right?
Correct. What I do need, and I don't know Pat, if you'd have this, but with writing it on behalf, yeah, the SAM number and some of those kinds of things.
I don't know. I don't have it. Okay. Do you have a document of our chairperson to sign off or anything like that?
Help me out, but I think the other things I would need is I would think that it'd be helpful. And maybe the motion is enough, but something that just says that I have the permission of, of the county to fill this out on their behalf, right? Since I'm going to be the one filing it electronically. If I put my name on it, I just want to make sure that that doesn't, you know, come back to bite me. But otherwise, as looking through this, the SAM registration and UEI number and then a W nine are really the only things that I see. And then there is a place for letters of support, but since the county's officially applying, we can create a letter of support from the Abbey that we would then attach to the grant.
And just going to throw out, if you're successful, there are probably other opportunities. We'd love to have you write grants for the county.
Bridges, roads.
There's, it's like, there's so many opportunities and not enough time for everyone to.
Sure. My complaint's always been these things tend to pop at fast and short deadlines and we're always chasing our.
Yeah, they're, they're very fast.
That's exactly what happened last time. I remember they came in. It was like it was due and.
Yeah, I've seen it for years. Yeah, Pat George made us alerted to this. So.
Yeah.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and also if I could express thank you for all you did in helping us purchase the nineteen hundred worth of street. And, and giving, putting the groundwork in place to allow us to do that. I love it. So really, we really hope it. Our, our goal in buying that was of course, the land that it's next, it abuts our land, but also to really help the people of Atchison.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Best of me.
A pleasure.
Do you have, I was looking in the internal control document for that CM number. Did you, you have it written? Okay, perfect.
Okay. Can you email that to me? Yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Can we go a ten minute executive session, please? Commissioners, HR.
Yeah.
Just for ten minutes. Real quick. We could. Yes, please.
I have on the W nine, we should sign that. Or if I'm signing.
Uh, yes, please.
Or I can or Michelle can. She probably probably get that from her now.
Michelle's not here. She's at a carrot meeting.
So it'd be hard to get it from her.
Um, I was, yes, sorry.
You have the, I don't have it remembered.
The E I N.
Yeah.
Um, I have our, yeah, I have it down upstairs.
Yeah, if you have a copy of the W two, that I mean, W nine was still playing the W nine. It would be on my W two as well. The treasurer maybe would be a good one to sign it or.
That makes sense.
The clerk is in here designing.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll sign it if she doesn't want to.
Fair.
I'll, I'll, I'll hop up upstairs and, and talk to her.
Thank you guys. Or it's working on it anyways.
And I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessed into executive session. At one thirty-five him to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. Now, the purposes of the per, closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session at one forty-five. And in the commission room basement of the courthouse, and those present will be the HR director, county counselor and the commissioners.
Have a second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Pass this to you. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that is completely.
You can just go.
Hey, your turn. I do too. Yeah, sorry, we're running, but I'm fine. Today was. I hear you're having a heck of a day. And it's, yes, it just continues on. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. What do you have? I brought some things through. About the legislature and how they determine pay scales. Yeah. Minutes from our
Thank you.
J C O meetings and our adult board meetings. And um, I told you guys forty-eight C is what Marie McNeil had said. Starting at the C is what we budget for in case there are any shortfalls. So I should be started at the A instead of the C. And here are those numbers. So then how all this came up originally was Casey, I can't remember when it was that you asked me about what everyone was paid and how their pay was determined.
Okay, so on December sixth, I had sent a department head email for budget discussions of health forecasting twenty twenty-four budget discussions for all departments, whether elected or appointed. And we were just trying to determine positions within departments and starting wages of how they were determined. And that's kind of where you started communicating with me and our HR director on, I, well, I added our HR director in. But I just feel like the information I've gotten and the, and yours your staff, this morning I wasn't prepared to have the conversation about your, your staff had turned down the increases because of the tax implications.
No, they turned down, they didn't want to be backpaid. No, they turned down, they didn't want it to be backpaid. They, they wanna be on the correct scale now. For when, or if whatever the poll raises are that Kansas approves. However, I'm not opposed to backpaying them. And then, you know, the, the second part of. Why this was important was that we are sending money back every year. That doesn't get expended. Um, and if we continue to do that, then we're going to, they're eventually gonna stop sending us as much. Um. I got people involved in more training. Um, that's still not going to make up for that. It's not budget shortfall, what is it, whenever you don't spend enough, overage, I guess. Um. And even, even the fact that I am.
I just feel like the information that I receive over and over isn't consistent and it's. Been misleading and there's been details omitted when. We wanted, uh. We wanted the advisory boards dance. And the advisory board was told that the commission approved.
Well, and I took that whenever you guys, whenever I presented it to you guys. I think your words were, if the advisory boards approve it, then we'll approve it. And I took that as basically your stamp of approval and. That's certainly my mistake. Um, this is all new to me and I, and I certainly did not. Intend to mislead anyone at all, um. Can you tell me like different information that's omitted or? Um, that you didn't get, well, I just.
Concerning that, we said we would go based on what. The advisory boards were told and you took that as our stamp of approval.
Yes, I did.
So, um. I don't know how.
Yeah, I didn't even realize I would need. I didn't even think about needing to come back before you after that was, that's how I treated it. It's my first time dealing with. Commission, boards of commissioners and, yeah, um, I certainly own that mistake.
Well, and that's one of the struggles I have, because as a leader in a department of the county, transparency and honesty and accurate. Especially when you're dealing with an advisory board in your commission. Being able to convey what's really being told, um, is very, very important.
Right.
So, um.
And I definitely understand that, and that was not at all my intention. Are you guys still reviewing all of that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to. I think I've grabbed it already.
Okay. Um, so unfortunately, um, I would entertain a motion, um. To terminate your position based on not being um, honest and. Misleading and omitting information.
My arguing about that.
Also good.
Okay. So, so motion, do I have a second?
Well, I think, I think we're confused there.
Okay, I'll make a motion. To um, terminate based on misleading and omitted information given to the commission. It's been moved, so I have a second, it's been seconded, all those in favor.
Can, can I ask a few questions?
Passes three to zero, yes.
Um, how did I mislead the commission?
So the information that we were given was not conveyed to your advisory board. And we asked for an advisory board to come with a recommendation and you went to your advisory board and said, we approved it.
Right, which was my understanding. Um. I don't understand how that's a. Fireable offense, um. I'm. Like in the middle of working on creating a budget, um, writing the grant for the. For the, um, for the money that community corrections gets every year, um, getting out in the community. Um, into schools to provide prevention education. I am doing above and beyond what was done before me. I'm trying to do. So much to give the face of community corrections in really good, um. What sort of, or um, perception in the community, I guess, um. And. I guess I, I don't feel that I misled you, um, whenever I went to the board or to the. Advisory boards. I'm. Misconstrued what you said, I guess, um, I did, I took that, when you said your words were. Um. And do we have that somewhere that? Um. That to stay competitive and, um. To stay competitive, that if the advisory boards approve it, then we, we would approve it as well.
Um, so I'm all for competitive wages in Atchison County, but I have a hard time when the advisory board in our HR. Went through the hiring process in October and then in December, I'm getting emails um, about adjustments and again, I. We have an advisory board and they, they hired on and chose the right scales, um, and so. I apologize, you misconstrued what was said, but.
Well, and then Tom Wysher in both, um. Both boards, both advisory boards. Um, brought up and said, he's the one that motioned for the. For the pay raise for in both boards. Um. And that was.
I think that was.
Part of.
The matrix. Yeah, there's a misunderstanding what matrix referring to, and there was no numbers given, I think it was just a matter of.
Yeah, I, the.
Information as far as what the real numbers were.
Right, well, I had. Provided the, the judicial pay plan and I put forty-eight C, um, in the.
Rates above, uh, where it should be. I don't know, it's Monica Gal, I don't know who she is.
Marie McNeil, she's the.
Point is, she's not the kind of commissioner and I think her advice was very ill-given.
Well, what she does is she's the financial. I'm sorry, I don't wanna say the wrong thing. Um, she's the financial person for KDOC. And based on this, they had determined that forty-eight C was. The amount.
There were no indications as far as rates for anyone else.
No, I didn't. No, I said that I wanted to put my people on the correct pay scale as well.
And then will they be out of balance with? Uh, so I have so many CSOs. There, there would be two different scales then, as far as what they, what they get put in, what grade they get put in.
And CSAs you're talking about.
Should be.
Core service officers, okay.
So it's also gonna be ratcheting each month, so. Yeah. That was good, I, I think it was very misleading as far as this whole setup, as far as how the pay stuff looks.
And then I would, I would also argue to you that we do. Um, the director and the CSO three, which is what Tom is, we have different. Expectations and different, um. We do a lot more as director in community corrections than what. Um, the CSOs have to do. I, is there, is there anything I can do to change your mind, um? I think that you guys have invested a lot in me and I have invested. A lot in Atchison County and this is where I wanna be and. You know, be in a very big mess, um. Trying to get things, trying to hire a new director. Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, uh. I mean, the vote stands and. Just showing inconsistencies, your email to us on February tenth doesn't match this that you handed us just now, so.
Right, and that is because I got the information from the financial person in Jeff City about. Um. Starting at C. Which is. What I didn't know at the time was that that's what budget for is that C level? In case of any shortfalls, but yeah, I should start at A. For everyone, new employees should start at A, six months move to B, a year move to C. Um, but maybe I didn't have all of the information that I should have had. But, um. Certainly no. Feel intent. Appreciate that. Thank you. And when it's effective.
You need it.
Okay. All right. What else we have? Okay, comment.
Oh, yep, sorry, county counselor, thanks, thank you. I have so many scratch around my agenda today for all of our executive sessions, do you have any updates?
I think, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, public comment, no. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved. Second.
Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero and we adjourn at two oh two.